Some areas of the state, there seem to be significant. Shortfalls and was it sure if that was at your level or the area agencies on aging? Do you have any? Information as to why some parts of the state seem to be having significant shortfalls and others are not?
There so most of the, most of the elderly nutrition programs are doing okay. They're seeing potentially an ARPA cliff. Further down the line and they're waiting to see what happens with the federal funding, but. There are a couple of areas that seem to be harder hit. And they have some flexibility. We've given them the flexibility through. Our federal rules to be able to move funding from congregate meals to. To the home delivered meals, to be able to. Move things around within their region and some of them have done that and some have not. So we're trying to work to make sure that they're. Fully exploring the flexibilities that they have available to them to make sure that there are no shortfalls. Cause we have. In addition to the funding that's on here, they also had ARPA funding. So there's a lot of funding that has gone out. We know this has been a huge need and our elderly nutrition providers have been fabulous throughout the pandemic, but. There was a lot of funding that went out to them. So we're trying to make sure that they. Fully explore the flexibilities, fully work with their area agencies on aging to. To be able to move around any funds that are possible.
Okay, um, but you're not withholding funds or anything along those lines?
We're not withholding funds.
Okay, and the, is there any specific effect of the unwinding of the public health emergency? On elderly nutrition?
You know, I, I think the only impact is. We saw quite a shift, obviously, from congregate meals to home delivered meals. People are starting to get out more. We're hoping to see more of the congregate meals because that also deals with. Isolation, which is a huge concern. We've heard all of you talk about. So, so we're concerned. We'd love to see people get, get back out again. I know Senator Austin's really been pushing to. To make sure that our senior centers have, have ways to get folks back out again. So I think there's gonna be some. Some impact about how do we, how do we make that shift? How do we help people? Sort of figure out the, the safe ways to be out and about and, and make sure that they're able to interact. So. I think in that way, there'll be definitely an impact, but I think right now there is some funding and we'll have to look at what that. What the number of meals, we, we amped those up quite a bit during, during the pandemic. And so what does that look like long term? What, what's the? The baseline number of meals we want to make sure are available. And there is a new procurement out through the area agencies on aging. So that will. Do a little bit of that resetting.
Yeah, I guess the sort of the thing that I'm frustrated with, I have, I have a. You know, different areas of agencies aging in my, in my district and. They seem to be going about things in sort of different ways and, and just trying to figure out if there's a way we can harmonize. Harmonize that. Senator Austin, I see has your hand up.
Thank you. So in public care and public testimony. One of the areas that we heard a lot from was the can. Under deaf blind services. And my understanding is that there's a very tiny grant that goes to them.
Yeah, the Communication Advocacy Network, they do get a small grant, but they, they. They have not been able to use all of the grant that's been made available to them. They. We have some individuals who are deaf blind that they're able to serve very well. There are individuals who are blind, but also use American Sign Language. They struggle to serve folks who don't use American Sign Language, who use lip reading, who use tactile interpreting, who use other. Other forms of communication. And so they're. They're actually, they do the tactile well. So they're struggling and they've, they've. Talked about partnering with us to try to reach out and get more service providers that might be able to. To meet that need, but they, they don't have that right now. So even though they have a small grant, they're not utilizing all of their, the grant that's. Available to them right now. They've got some other challenges with. The fact that their executive director is a volunteer. They don't have a, a, a strong infrastructure there and they've been trying to work with us to understand what their options are and. We're, we're trying to give them as much guidance as we can.
So that's something that I'm interested in seeing if we could provide the resources to have a paid executive director there that would. Be responsible to utilize some of the funds. We had a. Robust number of people that testified on this issue. There was not one person. And they all said that having somebody that they could have that would do this work. Would have been something that was very helpful to them. So if you could. Bring back what your, what your ideas are, but that's something that I'm interested in putting real dollars behind to get them an executive director and a. An administrative person that would allow them to do the work. That we have tasked them with. They used to be a paid part of the OPNA. Is my understanding then came under you and then through all of our budget troubles have been cut. But to have a volunteer be responsible at eighty-one years old, to be responsible for what she's responsible for is probably not the best thing. So thank you very much. Thank you, Matt.
I thank you. We also heard from. Uh, some of the area agencies on aging, I, I think both in appropriations, but also in human services. Looking for a, a social worker support at the agencies. Have, have you had any conversations with them about that proposal?
Yeah, we, we have, you know, we send a lot of our funding. Right through the area agencies on aging. So we certainly understand what they're looking for is. Sort of service navigators in each of the area agencies on aging and they, they all have one. They're looking to, to be able to expand that. And we just don't have the funding available for that at this point. As you know, there are a lot of competing needs. But there, that's, that's what they're looking to do is, is create a service navigator. Get funding for additional service navigator positions.
Okay, thank you. Representative Nuccio.
Thank you. I'm still trying to, every, every subcommittee seems to do this different. If it's kind of like just ask questions or raise your hands and that. So I'm trying to kind of feel my way through. One, can you please send this sheet? I don't think I have it. I don't, I might, but I don't. Haven't, wasn't easily, I didn't be able to identify it. And two, I've had a couple of people reach out regarding some of the services for the deaf and blind. In relation to, I noticed we just said that we have resources and are not really being used. Or grant dollars, they're not really being used. And the questions that I've been seeing are around like resources, apps that help them communicate. Computer, stuff like that, more. Hardware-y kind of things. Is that in here anywhere?
We do have, we actually have. A program for a deaf blind equipment distribution program where we're able to. If, if somebody does have needs like that, we are able to match them. So if you have needs like that. Representative, please, you know, have them contact me or our assistive technology program. Because that's where we can get them connected through, through that deaf blind equipment distribution program. And then the, these support funds that we were talking about earlier are more the. You know, engaging in the community and making sure people can, can have that community inclusion opportunity.
So more community kind of based stuff is this one here?
Yes, but we do have the equipment piece as well. So feel free to reach out to me if you want more details on that.
I hate to do this, but can you send me your contact information, please?
Sure, I will. Jasmine, can you pop that in the chat while we're talking? I can't see Jasmine, but I'm assuming she's nodding.
Yes.
I don't know if there is a chat.
Oh, no chat.
Know that there is on this. Have to be via email.
I will just send it to you by email.
I appreciate that.
If you can share with the administrators so that everybody gets it, that would be great.
And I'm sorry, can you scroll down on this file, please?
Yes.
Have we seen a fall off in the elderly nutrition or is it increasing?
The, all the details for this are in the email that. I think was shared with you this morning that has the breakout of, of both these dollars and then the ARPA dollars as well.
I see it now. I just found it. Okay, so this is in there. Okay. And I had sent, oh, there it is. Yep, there's my thing. Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Representative Nuccio, are you all set?
For now, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Do you wanna walk us through other changes? We already, we already had your hearing. We. Do you want to walk us through the responses to questions that you, you submitted this one?
Sure. So there, the first question was about our fall prevention program. I know. We had, the question was how many clients. Were served, who provides the services and why were the expenditures so low? So. We had an active fall prevention program with Yale. It was a Taiji Kwan, which is moving for better balance. It's an evidence-based practice to try to help older adults. Stay healthy, to keep them, to increase balance, to then. Prevent falls. And so Yale's been doing that for years with us. The person who's been running that program retired and they didn't have anyone to take it on. So that's the reason why. There, we weren't, we didn't expend as, as many funds. We are planning to do a request for application. To see if we can do more of this, to see if there's another provider who can provide this particular. Evidence-based practice or a similar one to make sure that we're enhancing healthy aging for folks. So this has the. The number of participants that did get fall prevention services through Connecticut Community Care, who, who tried to pick up the ball for us. And we're gonna continue to explore what we can do. We also just found out that the Department of Public Health is focusing on some fall prevention. So we're gonna. Partner with them and make sure that we're doing it in concert instead of creating. Different programs and, and hopefully amplify what they're already doing. Questions on the fall prevention?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, so the next question was just the, provide the ADS budget by account and program. So that's the budget at a glance that I just walked. You through and you can certainly walk through that and follow up with me directly if you have any questions. There was a question about how many people were served by the Independent Living Centers. So in state fiscal year twenty-two, the center served. Sixteen hundred and fifty individuals. The next question is elderly nutrition that we just talked about. This has the number of congregate meals and home delivered meals. So. Two, over two million congregate and home delivered meals provided to Connecticut older adults. In, in federal fiscal year twenty-two. So it has the state funds. And then the ARPA funds. The total ARPA funds allocated were six point nine million. And that the area agencies on aging are able to spend that through the end of federal fiscal year twenty-four. And again, we're trying to offer them as much flexibility as we can, particularly with the. Ending of the public health emergency. And this breaks out the home delivered meals, the congregate meals and the. Units of nutrition counseling. And as I did mention, we are, the area agencies on aging are in the process of doing their competitive procurement. We put it off a couple of years. We didn't think it was a good use of people's time to be doing a procurement during the middle of the. COVID emergency when the elderly nutrition providers were trying so hard to respond to the needs as were the area agencies. So. We granted them extensions and so they released their new procurement. Last two months ago, it's March already. So in January of this year and the proposals will be due in April. Questions on that before I jump to EOP?
Uh, yes, Representative Blonsky has his hand up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, thank you so much for. Everything that you're, you're doing with these programs and, and for your flexibility. Particularly on the elderly. My concerns with elder nutrition are we continue to see anecdotal. Uh, information coming in from area agencies on aging that. You know, even though we think that the, the, the funding has been dispersed, that, that. There, there's claims that it hasn't been. So whatever you can do to just remain flexible and. And just handle the one-off questions that we're getting to. Be sure that, that we're doing this. I mean, and I do want to make a note that from the general fund. You know, there is a, you know, a. Five hundred thousand dollar increase in elder nutrition that. Is visible there. I'm not certain exactly how that interacts. You know, with, with the federal funding, but. This is an area of intense. Prudney here in Western Connecticut because the. We haven't gotten back to congregate meals and the welfare. Checks that are associated with the Meals on Wheels program for individual deliveries is. I, I mean, it's, it's, it's more than just meals. It's, it's, it's the safety net, the safety net where. You know, where we do have a, a person that's checking on. Individuals that are most vulnerable. So. It's, it's terribly, terribly important to, 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 to us in Western Connecticut as well. And I just want to thank you for working through this with us.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we fully agree. It's a critical service and our. Area agencies on aging and our elderly nutrition providers have done a great job. Making sure people stay connected, making sure we're able to, to check on folks that aren't able to leave their homes. So. We agree it's a critical resource and, and we do feel like there's, there are funds here and if there are some that haven't been. Sent out to the ENPs, we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Keep going?
Sure. So the next section is the Employment Opportunities Program. It's a, a fairly small program. We served a hundred and nineteen individuals in state fiscal year twenty-two. And again, that is because this program is just for folks who don't have long-term supports from any other service. So a lot of folks. Get their long-term services and supports. Through Department of Developmental Services or through DMUS. So if they're eligible for those services, they're not eligible for our EOP program. So. We served a hundred and nineteen folks. The majority of people who were using these services. Required less than five hours a month. So just somebody to check in with them. On a regular basis to make sure that they were on track, staying on track, address any concerns that were coming up. We do have an ability for people to ask for more services than that. And we have a, a small percentage of people who have done that and we've. We've had no issue being able to grant access to more services as needed. There, there was a question about the medical loss ratios for vocational rehabilitation and workers comp. We don't rely on medical loss ratios for either of those programs. Our workers rehabilitation program is the one that it's probably most closely tied, but that's done at the workers compensation level. And then workers comp refers somebody to us for workers rehabilitation. If somebody is interested in assistance with going back to work. So. A referral can be made at any time, even before the, the sort of permanent restrictions are decided. And we can start working with somebody to help them return to work. There was, oh, I see a question from the person who asked the question.
Thank you so much for, you know, letting us know that you don't deal with the medical loss ratios. In terms of the actual cost, though, to the program from your perspective. The medical loss ratios, when you, when the person. Is deemed to, you know, need to collect workers' compensation. How do you make the decision as to how, how much to spend? If you don't use the medical loss ratios?
So the, where this program, our workers rehabilitation program is funded through the, the workers compensation fund. And they, they give us the funding from savings that they. As we get people back to work, they assume there's gonna be a savings there. So there's this program that's done at the workers' comp level. They. We have the budget that has sort of been consistent and they send that to us and we, we just do the return to work. So we don't have to make. Decisions about. The, the restrictions or the medical loss ratio that's done at the workers' comp commission. And we're able to focus on the individual and just helping them get back to work.
Well, thank you for that explanation. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Representative Johnson.
There was a question about how many ADS clients are also served by SNAP. We did try to. To ask this question, but it's, it's a very broad question. It's, it would be difficult for us to get. That answer with any accuracy. So we don't have that here. And then there was a question about are, are the federally funded employees in ADS in the state retirement system? So all, all of our employees have the option of being part of the. State retirement system. Our teachers for students who are visually impaired. Have the option of selecting the state retirement system or teachers' retirement system at the time that they're hired. So that's the only sort of. Discrepancy there. And then. The second question in that was, is the Long Term Care Ombudsman Program all federally funded? They, they're. Most of our positions are state-funded and we do also have federal funding there. And you'll see the breakout on the. The budget at a glance. So those are the, the questions that came up at appropriations.
Representative Exum has her hand up.
Yes, thank you so much. Good morning. I just wanted to follow up on the, the EOP program. I just would like a little bit more understanding. So the individuals who aren't eligible for services through DDS. And are they, are they eligible for services through BRS?
So if we have, if BRS, which is one of our programs, if they have, they. Begin working with somebody and look to develop an individual employment plan with an individual. And it's determined that they're gonna need long-term supports to be successful. They're gonna need those supports ongoing. We build that into the plan at the start because we want to make sure that we're not, we can only provide short-term services through the Bureau of Rehab. Services and through Besby, through the, the two vocational rehabilitation programs. So we want to make sure that the person is gonna be successful. And if they need ongoing supports, they have them in place. So at the time we're developing the plan. We, we identify what those long-term supports are gonna be. So if they're eligible for DDS. Then we work with DDS to get that plan in place. If they're eligible for DMUS, the same thing. And then this. State-funded program is designed to sort of catch those folks that don't have either of those programs. And so we're able to identify. EOP as a potential long-term support for an individual moving forward.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Representative Exum, we are over time right now, so I want to be just mindful of.
If I, if I could just one really quick follow up with that, I just want to know how people. Where do they go to even find that they qualify for that? Do they usually start the DDS and end up being fun there? Or how do they find out?
The vocational rehabilitation counselor, as they're working with them at BRS or Besby, would be able to identify that as a resource for them. So that's. As they're exploring what those ongoing supports might be, they're, they're working on that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much.
I am, I was, if that was a false alarm, we are not over time.
But go ahead. But thank you.
Just a fire drill real quick.
Those to see how quick we could wrap up.
Exactly. Representative Nuccio.
Thank you. So I had some questions and you had sent over some answers. And the questions that I had, if we have a minute here, I'd like to kind of focus in on the opens that you have in the hiring. Pattern that you have built into the budget. You had mentioned that you have thirty open, thirty vacancies right now and that their start dates are staggered throughout the year. Do you happen to have? An exhibit that shows what the start dates are by chance?
We don't because we're, there's a number of things that, that sort of influence that. We have, I think I mentioned in, during the appropriations hearing that. For instance, if we were doing hiring in our disability. Determination Services Program, we do them all in, as a group and we do them once a year because social security. Gives us hiring authority once a year. So once they give us the hiring authority, we'll do a group and we'll, we'll maybe hire fifteen or twenty people. So. Then we start the hiring process. And so we don't have, we don't exactly know when the hiring dates are gonna be. Right now, we're. Working through our vacancies. We're trying to prioritize which, which things we need to fill first. So we don't overwhelm the system and we are, we've been doing a pretty good job of, of filling on a regular basis, but we, I don't think we. Could even come up with a, an exhibit that would show that.
So that's the, the federal ones. I'm more concerned in this case with the general fund. And that's where you said you have thirty general fund vacancies right now. And I'm asking because up above, I say, where are the, they budgeted into your plan? You said they're budgeted in as full-year, full-time positions. So I'm trying to understand. These thirty vacancies, right? And if I look at the next section there, it says approximately, you hired approximately twenty-four throughout the year. Last year and you had twenty-two new hires. In the, the same, twenty-two new hires of the twenty-four, right? So I'm trying to get down to what is in your budget from a head count perspective. From the general fund. So the thirty vacancies, how are they budgeted?
They're, yeah, they're, they're all budgeted as full-year, full-time positions.
Okay, all right. So then they're not staggered. They're just in for a full year, full time.
I may have misunderstood your question when you asked it in, in the. In this spreadsheet, but I mean, in, in your list of questions, but so we, we budget them for a full year, full-time positions. But I can't tell you when they're gonna start because we're working on that recruitment process right now. That's why we said it was staggered because it's gonna just depend on. When, when we're able to either get hiring authority or when we get to those in the, in the order of priority in our agency.
Okay, and do you guys have lapses this year?
We had lapses in. A couple of accounts. Jasmine, do you wanna take that? I'm just scrolling down to that. Jasmine, are you still on?
Yep, I'm right here. And I'm just scrolling through the question as well. And for the last question, we referring to the. State Comptroller's Budgetary Statutory Status Annual Report.
I don't have that.
Exhibit B three shows. FY twenty-two appropriations that would continue. To FY twenty-three for the general fund.
I, I mean, so this year, do you have lapses? Do you have balances left that you're, that you did not spend last year? Is that, you're telling me to kind of just look through this hundred-page report to, to find the numbers?
I know that we had four, four areas where we had lapses, where we asked for carry forward. And that was in our vocational rehabilitation program. Our programs for senior citizens. I'm saying these off the top of my head, our independent living centers. And do you remember the fourth one, Jasmine? I think it was in our, it might have been in programs for senior citizens.
Did you have any lapses in headcount? Because I'm looking at the headcount sheet that you gave me. You're funded for a hundred and thirty-one positions. You have ninety-seven. Filled positions, twenty-three that you're saying are vacant actives. That means there are eleven. That are currently inactive. Is there dollars in this budget for those eleven?
There, there may be dollars and if we would, we. Could lapse those dollars if we don't, if we don't fill those positions.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure. Did you have last dollars for last year for opens? And if you have a hundred and thirty-one people's worth of dollars in this budget, I want to understand that because you're adding a position which. I don't know why we wouldn't just reassign one of the positions that haven't been filled rather than adding another headcount.
Understood. I, again, I think we were not necessarily collecting, connecting your first set of questions about the. Headcount with the questions about laps to, to be able to really drill down to that. So let us get you that information to see what. It, it sounds like the question is, was there a lapse in your personal services account or any account that had?
Well, I was looking for lapses in general, right? So you mentioned four. All right. So those have lapses and those are dollars that you're carrying forward. That was the vocational rehabilitation, senior citizen, actually three, program for senior citizens and, and. And the living one. So you, you mentioned three areas that you had lapses. I also want to know what the lapse is for your. Headcount for Personnel Services. Um, again, like if, if we're, if you're budgeted for a hundred and thirty-one positions and you're only hiring out there for twenty-three, that leaves eleven positions that you have funded in this budget that we're not hiring for. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out what your personal services number should be or would be if we accounted for those opens that we're not going to fill or the fact that all of the opens are in there with a seven-one start date.
Okay, we, we can work to get you that information more specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Nuccio. Um, any additional questions for Commissioner Porter? If not, then we'll let you off five minutes early.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Excuse us, you.
Bye-bye.
I see we've got some folks on from the Department of Social Services who we've got until eleven. Or do, I mean, we've got Gee, I see you. Is there anybody else? I, we're gonna, well, we're gonna start in five minutes so we can take a five-minute.
Yeah, our, our Commissioner Barton Reeves is, is planning to attend and she'll be presenting on behalf of the department. So if, if it's appropriate, maybe could we, could we?
Well, we can wait till our allotted time. That seems reasonable. Um, quick question though, um, I don't see any, um, uh, any responses, some of the agencies respond to questions from the public hearing. I don't know if you had an opportunity to, to do that or to, to provide responses to questions. Do you heard of that?
They did, Mr. Chair. Um, they came in during the course of ads presentation. So you have them in your inbox now. And I'm going to have a conversation with my friends at OPM to make sure that we get these responses in a timely fashion.
Susan, I don't think I see mine. Did those come?
Oh, you're talking about?
Let me see. Hold on. It was sent at nine thirty-seven.
I'm looking, yeah.
It, it looks like what's in the field that your questions are included in one of their documents. It's not a separate document. It's just in the two.
I'm trying to print out the, we're up to already like fifty pages of stuff. I don't know how we're going to read that before, uh, before this meeting, but.
Well, that's why I'm going to have to have a conversation with my friends at OPM who I know are listening. Um, that we need to have these materials submitted, not while the subcommittee is underway, but in advance of the subcommittee.
It makes it kind of hard to, to, to go through everything when we have literally no time to.
Yep.
Feel like I'm voting on the floor here. Hold on, let me go grab all my printing now.
Now, there are only nineteen pages of answers to our questions. The other stuff is all supporting material about public health and wine.
So it's, we wait for the DSS team to come on. And I see the commissioners in now. If there's someone from the DSS team who would like to share the document, which is the responses to questions, uh, screen sharing has been enabled.
Cue, I don't think we had intended to, but let me see if someone on the team has it available. Would you prefer that we share it? Because we can certainly do that.
I think so, Commissioner, only because the members have not had an opportunity to print it out or even look at the document. So I think that would be helpful if we could have someone share.
Wasn't aware of that. I apologize for that. Um.
Okay.
Good morning, Nick. Do you want to share it or I can pull it up? Okay. Okay, hopefully everybody can see that. Is it visible?
Yes, it is.
All right, great. Thank you. And we're, we're ready to begin whenever the chairs are, are ready.
Okay. Commissioner, why don't you go ahead and start walking us through the responses? Love to, I think we have a lot of additional questions, but let's start with, with the responses.
Good morning. It's helpful if I wasn't muted. Uh, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to answer additional questions about, uh, our budget for this year. I do have, uh, my team with me and we will actually be working in responding to your questions as a group and a team. Uh, so I will answer some and then I will turn to, uh, some of our other team members to answer others. So what I will do is I will start with, um, we okay, Nick? Because we keep going back and forth. Are we good? Would you prefer that I share or someone else? We're good? Okay. So we'll start with the first question, which is the redeterminations. We actually, uh, do have an overview of the unwinding and I am sorry that you did not get this document in advance. I'm, I'm not sure how that occurred, but we have two presentations that we can share with you. One is, uh, one that we shared with the Human Services and Insurance and Real Estate Committees jointly. And Access Health also has provided some presentations on additional information. But understanding that you haven't had an opportunity to see it, I'll try to give a brief overview now. Uh, so I'll start actually with the monthly average total, total Husky renewals because I know there was quite a bit of interest in the unwinding itself and passive renewals versus, uh, active renewals. So the average monthly, the monthly average total Husky renewals, that's extension and regular. And I, I also asked Peter to offer any additional support, is about forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine projected monthly average households that are due for renewal each month of each month of the unwinding. So we're talking about a significant number of people. And this is a sixty-eight percent increase over the prior calendar year. But we think about thirty-one thousand of those renewals will actually be passive renewals. And we're defining passive as those renewals that can be done with data that is available to us through various state and federal databases. So that really leaves about thirteen thousand people each month. So we're not talking about entirely of the, you know, sixty, seventy thousand people who are going to be renewed every single month in terms of the number of people who are going to have their Husky renewals. Uh, and that really makes up the bulk of the renewals. We're also working in concert with Access Health. And if I can, I don't know, um, Nick, if you can actually get into that presentation and maybe go to slides, uh, six and seven of the DSS presentation, I think would actually be helpful to see it rather than have me describe it. Here we go. Okay. All right. So I know there are a lot of numbers here and, uh, but you will have this presentation available to you. So this is the chart that we use that actually helps us track passive renewals that are extended, passive renewals that are, are the irregular, the total number of renewals, those that we think will be manual, the numbers that we think will fail for non-income reasons and the numbers that we think will fail for income reasons. So this is really based on a lot of data and our own experience in, uh, managing renewals in general, knowing that there's going to be significant amounts of volume, uh, given that there's an unwinding and people have been extended over time that may not have, under normal circumstances, been, uh, renewed year over year for Medicaid and, and may have remained, uh, Medicaid eligible, but they are. So maybe, Nick, if you go to the previous, um, slide, so that we can just review what I, um, just mentioned. Okay. So this is how we are working in concert with Access Health. So you see that sixty days prior to the renewal, we are using a passive renewal process using, as I mentioned, the data sources from DOL, IRS and the Social Security Administration. And where we have a successful match, we will be engaging in a passive renewal. And where we have a mismatch and we're not able to get that data through any other source, we are going to be requiring a manual renewal. And then if you can see here with the forty-five days prior to renewal, we are letting households know if they're successful renewal, if their path, if their renewal was, uh, able to be accomplished passively, then we'll let them know that they don't really need to engage in any other action. If not, then we're going to try to send them forms that have as much information filled in as possible. So, and then letting them know specifically, either online or phone or paper, what it is that they really need to do rather than just get a, and we all hate this, right? You just get a package in the mail. It's got a ton of forms and it has no information. We're really trying to make this process as easy as possible for people knowing that there's already a significant amount of concern about the renewal itself. So, um, maybe, Nick, if we can go to slide seven, I think that's the right one. So also I'm working for two different, uh, presentations. All right. So this slide actually speaks to the numbers that I just, that I mentioned earlier about the average, um, monthly Husky renewals, that number, what that increase looks like, what we, the numbers that we actually think are passive. And this is really us, uh, what we think is a summary or a subset of that other slide that I just showed, which is, which is quite complicated, right? Where we've done all the math for all the months through the, through the entire year, um, which we follow, but we recognize that that's, it's not necessarily user-friendly. So we've, we've summarized it in this particular slide. Uh, so without really inundating you with a ton of information, this is, these, these three slides really, we think summarize the work that we've been doing. The, the slide presentation itself is actually quite extensive. Uh, so if you do have an opportunity to review it, we can certainly do that because it, it does go through what will be happening under SNAP, um, Medicaid PHE, um, our cash. It reviews everything, but for the purposes of time today, we wanted to just focus on these numbers. Uh, can we go back? Yes, thank you very much. All right. Then with respect to question to a brief overview of Husky Health by eligibility group, we do have our enrollment numbers here. Uh, there are no other, uh, complex charts with respect to lots of numbers in them, but you can see what the average enrollment is, um, well, by caseload and per, um, per member, per month. In the, on the next page, we actually have a number of charts that outline per member, per month for Husky data. So we have the average quarterly for all of the programs, which you can see in the very first slide. Oh, hang on, just hang on a second. Thank you, Nick. You can see the quarterly for the very first slides here. I'm sorry, by program here. Uh, Husky A and D and then C. And then if we move, we do then provide additional information by program. So you can see that there's been a steady increase in, in Husky B, um, average quarterly per member, per month. Uh, you can see how it's climbed up, uh, in terms of the, the amount of benefit from the quarter ending March of twenty twenty-one to the quarter ending in December of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and again, you know, our explanation for this, it's really driven by new Husky B prenatal care coverage for unborn children of non-citizen pregnant, uh, individuals. And that began in the quarter that ended in six thirty of twenty twenty-two. So you can see a significant increase, uh, and that is the reason why.
Commissioner, just real quick, what, why would, um, expanded enrollment increase the PMPM?
Yeah, well, it, it, I'll let someone else, go ahead, Peter. I have my own answer, but I'll, I'll let the experts answer.
Yeah, and welcome, Nick, jumping in as well. Uh, this is basically because the, the level of services that are provided to pregnant individuals is a higher cost and more consistent service delivery than for the, the children who are, uh, the core enrollees in Husky B normally.
So, but you expect, I assume it, th- this is a, this is a blip due to a new enrollment, but you're expecting that to level out?
No, I expect it to stay up higher going forward, right? We, we've changed the mix of people who are enrolled in Husky B. And, and, you know, not only do we have children aged zero to eighteen, we now have, uh, pregnant adults and their unborn child as part of the Husky B population as well. So this is just, um, this is, this is gonna, this is probably going to be the new norm for Husky B on average. We could theoretically, we can split this out as well, right? If you want to see the, the PMPM for the, for the, um, you know, unborn child expansion that we did last session for, for CHIP versus the, the kids who had always been in it, you'd probably see two lines, one which is probably still staying in that two hundred dollar PMPM month and then, and then a higher level one, um, for the adults who are receiving those more intensive, uh, prenatal care services.
I guess, uh, my question was, you know, we, it looks like a, quite a straight line, but there's a, there's a steady increase. I assume that that increase is going to level out though with a, you know, when, when the population normalizes. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, I think if you, it, it will over time presumably. Um, we don't know exactly when we're getting, I think that, to that aspect, you're correct, Senator Lester, right? It is about the new enrollment and as it goes up, we probably will get to a plateau for the number of people enrolled in prenatal coverage and the corresponding PMPM should level out as well.
Excuse me, uh, Commissioner or, uh, Mr. Chair, um, can you go back to the, the, the four categories, please? And for a lot of people, because I know I've got a lot of blank faces, we don't have everybody on the same page. So can we tell you, can you tell us what Husky A is? Who's in it? Husky B, who's in it? Husky C, who's in it? Husky D, who's in it? Because I don't want to answer on text from my.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I was, I was about to do that. I see that he looks anxious to come off mute and answer that, but I can certainly do that as well. But Gee, do you mind?
Um, Peter, yeah, why don't you take this?
So, so very quickly, Husky A is largely, um, children who are enrolled in Medicaid and their parent or caretaker relatives. It also includes pregnant individuals. Husky B is our chip-funded program for children, which is why the number is substantially still small, smaller is for a higher income band than what is covered by Medicaid, which is under Husky A. Husky C is our enrollment for the aged, blind, disabled and long-term, uh, services and supports. Husky D is our low-income adult population that was expanded in the last decade or so and is, is the feature of the Affordable Care Act expansion for many states, though Connecticut got a head start on it in the, in the early twenty-tens. And the Medicare savings program is, um, a program that helps, uh, folks who are enrolled in Medicare to pay for their premiums and out-of-pocket costs related to Medicare coverage.
Would, would you send, would you send that to us, please, broken now? Because I'm sure nobody wrote that.
It might be good just to recirculate the whole Medicaid one-on-one presentation. Um, DS did a great job of that. Sorry to jump in, but, um, it goes through all this stuff in a lot of detail. And, um, I think that might be helpful for members to see that because not everybody was able to, to join that.
Gee, don't worry about it. I'm happy to do that. I've got it. You don't need to resend it to me and I'll send it to the committee.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I may just also note, there's a link embedded in this document that will bring you to the, the page on our website that breaks down Husky A, B, C, and D and the general eligibility provisions for each area.
Thanks, Peter.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question too, or Mr., Mr. Chair. Uh, I have my hand up though, so. Peter, uh, and thank you very much, Chairs, for asking these questions. But Peter, if you could bring back to us, if you don't want to do it this morning, a disaggregation of the cost on the service expansion, um, that you seem to attribute to the services, uh, for the prenatal. And I don't want to argue about it because I haven't got any data, but historically, you know, in the old days, they used to, insurers didn't want to cover the first year of life because one or two kids with anomalies could really throw the whole, the whole cohort out of, out of whack. But it sounds like you're arguing that the, that the, uh, that the range of services are driving the cost up and it would be helpful if you could break that down. And thank you very much for asking this question to Senator Lester and obviously Senator Walker, Representative Walker, sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Rep Dylan. I, I think we shouldn't have a problem doing that. It might take us a little bit of time just to break it out between the different kite. Yeah, thanks Rep Dylan. I think we shouldn't have a problem doing that. It might take us a little bit of time just to break it out between the different types of coverage that are within there. And
Oh, well, I don't want to, I don't want to torture you. I just want to understand, you know, why, why that graph looks the way it does and why it's being attributed to the services and not to the demographics, for example, and whether, you know, that's all. Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, quickly, can you just verify again, when did the, the, the Husky B prenatal coverage regardless of status go into effect March from the two hundred? So we're going from two hundred dollars to three hundred and sixty dollars and three quarters? Not even a full year yet, correct?
Right. April first, twenty twenty-two was the start date of the coverage.
And we don't have any idea where we think that's gonna plateau yet, do we?
Yeah, I don't have all the, the enrollment data for every, for every group within this particular presentation, but you can, you can, I have provided it both to Maypoc and to other groups and happy to reproduce it for you. You'll, you'll see that it is a very steep increase in enrollment in the first few months of the program and that it has already started to level off somewhat. So we're probably in a range where we can anticipate about how many people will be enrolled at any one point in time. Of course, people, you know, they, they don't stay in prenatal care forever. So that tends to be a, a, a cycle of people at any given point in time. I believe we have about sixteen hundred people who are enrolled in the program.
I believe the legislation that was prenatal care plus one year, right?
There will be state-funded postpartum coverage that will start effective April first, twenty twenty-three, very soon.
So we'll have an additional year of the postpartum coverage, correct?
That's correct, but you won't see that in this particular visual because this is around Husky B, which is the chip-funded coverage. The chip-funded coverage is for the prenatal component. It's a state
So the other piece will jump up to what Husky A, right?
It's a state, it's a state-funded program, so it'll be a separate component entirely.
Does, where, okay, now you piqued my curiosity. Where, where, like if it's a state-funded component, where do I find that then? Cause I don't want to see dollars drop off here and then go into some god awful off-books Neverland that we never know how much the cost of a policy is.
Um, so it's just a new coverage group and we'll be pretty, we can produce information about enrollment in that coverage group once it's implemented. And the associated PMPM, it's, you know, they're, they're, these are new coverages. So, you know, this along with the state Husky program would just have to be tracked separately because it's not a Medicaid-funded program. We're showing you the Medicaid and chip-funded programs here. Not this, not the state-funded programs.
And that, that post one year, is that just immigrants, just undocumented immigrants, or is that anybody?
I apologize, which, which, which particular one?
The year of post. So we have the pregnancy and then we have the year after coverage. You said that's going to be something totally different with its own PMPM that we'll track because it's state-covered.
Right. So that's a, that's a coverage that is state-funded for people who have given birth and is postpartum for one year. This is for people who do not qualify for Medicaid due to their immigration status. So it could be folks who are undocumented, include, include people who are under the five-year bar that is normally required for being able to claim federal matching in federal programs. And otherwise, you know, it could be, so there's a mix of undocumented and lawfully qualified people, but who is basically anybody who can't be covered by Medicaid, we're going to give them the one-year postpartum coverage. And that's a state-funded program.
Do we have any estimates on that cost? Cause I'm assuming that would be in this budget.
My understanding is that there's probably were costs when it was projected out for implementation, it hasn't even begun yet. So we don't have particular costs to be able to, to show you right now.
So I guess my question then is, is that in this budget, right? Do we have that funding that, that cost for that program? Even if it's just an estimate at this point, we know how many women have signed up for this, for the service who are pregnant, right? So now we're going to have to extrapolate out what a full year of, of full services are for that population. So where are those dollars in the Medicaid budget? Or not Medicaid, wherever it's going to be housed, which I don't know where that is yet.
So those, those state funds are included in this budget. They're under the Medicaid program. They're in the Medicaid account, fully state-funded, assuming no federal match, but within the total Medicaid budget, they're in as a baseline expense because the expansion of, of that program and that service was actually in the, the twenty-three midterm adjustments. So they're already in the baseline. They're accounted for under Medicaid, fully state-funded. And, and I can get you the, the numbers. I can follow up with what's in the baseline, but
I would appreciate that.
They're not an adjustment to the twenty-four and twenty-five budget because they're assumed within the baseline that carried from twenty-three into twenty-four and twenty-five.
Well, but I, I guess walk me through that. How are they in an assumed budget when we don't, they don't even exist yet, right? So right now they're on this program, which we're seeing almost a double, right? A double in the PMPM because we're covering the pregnancy and the people, right? So how are
So I just mean, the estimates for those costs are assumed in the baseline, not spiked out as a separate adjustment to the baseline in like what you would look at in the OFA budget sheets. Cause they're accounted for in the total baseline, but I'll get you the, the amount that is in the baseline that's estimated in the baseline.
I would appreciate that. And then if you said we're going to have a separate graph going forward of a PMPM on this, is there a way, Mr. Hadler, that we can get that assumed PMPM for this population and what it's going to look like for the next year? In comparison to all the other Husky programs? People need, we need to understand the cost of legislation, right? So I, I need to understand how this is going to, how this is affecting our Medicaid line, not only from just this piece here, but also from the ongoing year of expense if possible. So if you can provide that baseline and you can provide the projected PMPM, the amount of people we expect to have on it and how we see that playing out, I would really appreciate that.
Yep, we can do that. We can follow.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Representative. Can we, we have only, we've less than an hour to go and we got a, a lot of questions I'm sure to go through and we, we're still just going through the previous questions that we haven't had a chance to read yet. So thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, do you want to return to the, to the, to the presentation?
I, I do, Senator, I do see that Representative Dayton has her, has had her hand raised. Would you prefer that I move forward or would you like us to address Representative Dayton's question? I just want to make sure I follow the appropriate protocols you directed.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Representative Dayton, can we, i- is it, is it urgent or can we?
Well, it's just about this subject and just wanted a clarifying response here, if I may, Chairman.
Yeah, if you could, if you could be quick, we'd like to, like to get
Just for the avoidance of doubt, I know we've talked a lot about in Maypoc, the wraparound sort of maternity bundle. And do we envision that maternity bundle is going to be a cost saver for the PMPM on the Husky program here that is for the Husky A?
Great. I'm sorry, I was just going to say, thank you for your question. I actually do, we have a more specific answer around the maternity bundle in one of our later questions, but
Okay, I'll wait. Yeah, but I do think that that will help Representative Nuccio's questions as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative.
Uh, Nick, maybe if we could go to the other Husky B chart. Yes, thank you, since we're already on it. So we were just speaking about Husky B and we were describing what, actually what the Husky is. And Husky is not, Husky B is not just a large category. It also has bands that are broken up. So I'll describe what the bands are. So Hus- so band one is children through the age of eighteen and they have, they, it's actually our chip program, children zero to twelve, if they're, and this is one, this is a program that has no monthly premiums and some co-pays. All right. So then Husky Band Two, and I will ask my team to please correct me if I'm correct, if I'm incorrect, is the chip program or state Husky, non-Medicaid, Husky B for children ages zero to twelve and a monthly premium of thirty dollars for one child and fifty dollars for more than one child with some copayments. So that's the bands that we have there. And then we have a prenatal band also under Husky B, which is also considered part of our chip non-Medicaid program and it, it has no monthly premiums and some co-pays for some non-pregnancy services. So Husky B is not just the, the general category of this, of the coverage that Peter described. It also has these bands. And so here you can see that we've broken it out by band one, band two and band three, and we will indeed provide the descriptions of what the bands are. But you can see that the prenatal band, I remember, I think Representative Dylan, you were asking some questions about prenatal and maternal health and you can see where we have our average quarterly enrollment by band. By far, our largest band is band one, and that's where we have our Husky B non-Medicaid for children's, children ages zero to twelve or through eighteen, if they've been enrolled before they turn thirteen years old. So that's where we have our, our first, our largest band, and then our second band is for this, essentially the same group of children in a, in a different income category where they have a small co-pay. All right. And then, I'm sorry, Nick, if we could go back to that, just that last, yes, here. Yep, just a little bit more. Thank you. But we have our average quarterly enrollment by program for Husky A, C and D. All right. Then we can go to the next question and I'm going to ask Gee to join me in answering this. It, we do not have a systematic approach to assessing rates across provider types and this I, I am very acutely aware and this is why the legislature, the legislature, we hope will approve the million dollars and the appropriations chairs will also approve the million dollars that we are looking forward to conduct a rate study. Actually, Gee is our Medicaid Director, along with other members of our team are hoping we can put together a request for proposals that, so that as soon as the funds are available, we hope they will be made available, we can launch this rate study. So as we walk through this process, you can see, and when we answer this question, that we do currently lack a systematic approach to assessing rates based on provider type. But the budget, the, the governor's budget does allocate the million dollars in ARPA funds that I just mentioned. Nick, maybe if we can just scroll up a little bit. Okay. Uh, nope, other way to, for the rest of the answer to this question. There we go. Thank you. All right. And I, we recognize that we were asked to provide a comprehensive list of the providers. There are in fact four hundred and thirty separate provider types in the Medicaid program. So we weren't able to really generate the list with the rates, but we do have a summary of the rate assessments and the rate adjustments that we provided, which is in the table that follows this, which is right below it. It does not provide for all of the provider types, but it does have some of a summary here and you can see that here. So we've actually chosen some of the larger categories where we have our Medicaid spend. So that would include nursing homes, hospitals, both inpatient and outpatient, our specialists excluding the obstetricians, primary care physicians, FQHCs, which actually have a different funding model. And I know that was one of the questions you asked us to respond to and we do have a response to that, our home health and our waiver services. And again, our intermediate care facilities and our our homes for people with intellectual and related disabilities. The numbers there you can see are, are small. And some of these adjustments have not been made in quite some time, but with four hundred and thirty providers across a wide span, we recognize that there needs to be a much more consistent approach for setting rates. And that is why we'd like to conduct the rate study that we've asked for and the million dollars that we've asked for in the budget that has been included in the governor's budget. Uh, so now moving on to question four, the residential care homes. So there was a question asked as to why the state is not moving forward with claiming certain services under Medicaid for these homes. The, the challenge is that we had hoped and had done actually a significant amount of analysis, hoping that we would be able to use some of the funding so that we could actually recognize some savings and also provide more funding for residential care homes. But after we had an opportunity to extensively review how this process would actually work, it turned out that it would actually cost the state more money and that it really would have been very difficult for a lot of homes to administer the program because of its complexity. And we also realized after essentially seeing the program in action, that it would actually have a negative impact on some of the residents because of the changes. It's complicated, but with respect to income and, and the programs that they might be eligible for, it probably would negatively impacted a number of residents and who would have then lost actually some of their benefits. So instead of, of doing that, we asked for ARPA funding of three point seven million in twenty twenty-three to serve as a bridge for many of these homes so that they could actually, they could actually invest in infrastructure and do a number of the things that they would have done. We had hoped if we were to able to have the program unroll or unfold the way that we had hoped. Uh, that's this in a summary, and I don't know if anybody else from my team would like to add some more detail? Anybody at all? Okay. It doesn't look that way. All right. So when you do have an opportunity to prove, to review the document in detail, it does provide, it does note that we have three point seven million dollars in ARPA funding in FY twenty twenty-three as a bridge and that the governor's budget has a five point two million dollar allocation to rebase the rates and another five million dollars in, in ARPA to encourage those older homes to engage in upgrading and providing greater safety features and provide quality services. So we're asking for that money and that is in the budget. And then an additional nine hundred million dollars to fund any retroactive payments that we've, sorry, nine, nine hundred, that's right, nine hundred thousand dollars, not million dollars, sorry, nine hundred thousand dollars to fund any retroactive payments. We're not asking for nine hundred, for a billion dollars. We are not doing that. So that's, I misspoke. I apologize. Okay. And the summary of those costs are, are right here. So you can see that the allowance for the retroactive payments are actually broken up by fiscal year for three hundred eighty-three thousand in the first and five hundred and fifteen thousand in the second. Uh, now moving on to FQHCs and I think I will ask Gee and Nicole if they would take this question, how they're funded and why we have two different methods of funding and, and what has transpired to date.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Commissioner. I can take it and Nicole can, can correct me if I make any mistakes or fill in. So FQHCs, just to, to level set, they, they're a really important part of the Husky program. They provide primary care to our underserved members. Under federal law, and we're actually going to cover this on Friday's Maypoc in more detail for those who want to dive deep. But under federal law, um, federal law really dictates how we pay FQHCs and the way that we pay FQHCs is very different from the way that we pay other providers. If I go, you know, to a, a primary care doctor across the street, uh, the Medicaid program pays fee for service, right? They, they look at what, what the procedure was done and there's a whole kind of billing structure around that. With, with FQHCs under federal law, they're paid with something called the PPS, the prospective payment system, which is a fixed amount of money to cover all of the either medical, behavioral health or dental services that are done in a particular day, a couple of exceptions. And that rate is FQHC specific. So FQHCs that have more comprehensive care, that have a greater bundle of services, have a higher EPS rate than FQHCs that have a more limited bundle of services. Um, under federal law, furthermore, we update the, the rates that we pay FQHCs for inflation under the Medicare Inflation Index. And the, the two ways that an FQHC can have their rate changed, one, if they either increase or decreases the, the set of services that they get, we have a procedure for making adjustments to the, the daily rates to FQHCs. Um, and then second, under federal law, FQHCs can enter into an alternative payment model, a value-based care arrangement with the Medicaid program, so long as it is basically upside only, so long as the FQHCs make at least as much under the alternative payment model as they would have under the standard PPS system. Hopefully that, hopefully that helps. Again, this is a one provider type where federal law really dictates uh, in, in a lot of specificity, how we pay, how much we pay and kind of the, the details there.
And so you adjust the annual encounter rates yearly based on the MEI?
We do, Senator. Yes, under federal law. Yep.
Um, and so the FQHCs maintain that the MEI has not kept up with medical inflation. Is that, is that accurate or, or, or not?
So a good question. I mean, and I, I know you know this, Senator, just gonna, just say it, the, the MEI is something calculated by the federal government and under federal law, um, this is how the federal government is telling states to reimburse FQHCs and how to adjust for inflation. The, the MEI is designed to measure the rising cost of delivering healthcare services in a, in, in a, in a given area. And so one can certainly tell stories for why it might be too low or too high, but I think if you just take a big step back, it was designed by the federal government to answer this question. And I'm not saying I disagree with the FQHCs. I just, I think it's important to, 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 to note that they are on this kind of standard adjustment system that many of our other provider types are not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Matt, I, I just want to, I want to
Matt, I I just wanna I wanna come back to this. After we digest the information that we've been given because. I beg to differ with you, so I'm not going to interfere with this right now. So let's move on. Thank you.
You're differing with Gee, not with me, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
Just checking.
You're good.
Um, great. Uh, but please proceed.
All right.
Um, I will, I I'm gonna just jump in and just say, you know, I, we we are just, I'm being very mindful of time and we only have. Forty minutes left, and I have a hunch that there are going to be a lot of questions. So. I just be given the late submission of this of the responses to questions and just the. Time, I think we're gonna need an additional block of time from the agency to to have some additional questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. We're definitely gonna need more time.
Yes. Yes, we are. Thank you. Uh, so the next question is asking for an explanation of the Community First Choice Program and how it's expanded in the governor's budget. So in a nutshell, um, the governor's budget assumes an expansion of the program. By allowing uh those who self-direct their care to also have the option of have that having that self-direction be agency-based. It is very difficult for an individual to try to identify screen higher and then direct to the care. Of a person who's caring for their uh activities of daily living. So to give a person an option of being able to have an agency work with them. To identify a person and and also to identify maybe any additional needs that they may have as a person requiring care. Uh, gives people more choice in the Community First Choice Program. So the governor's budget assumes, uh, you can see that there are the savings of twelve point three million dollars in the first year. You primarily because of the enhanced federal match and the enhanced federal match is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of. Six percent, but uh Nick, if I'm wrong, please let me know. And then sort of a modest savings that we assume will come from people not having to go into. Uh, higher cost institutions because they're able to hire the kind of and of care that they need in their homes, but it will increase over time. Because we will have people, the cost, I'm saying that the cost will increase over time because we will have people. Who are currently at a nursing home uh level of care, but may be relying on an informal supports to uh care to find care for themselves through the program. So we are looking for people who may um be moving from one mode of care to another. And we do think that we'll see some increase as a result of that. And also because our state is just it's aging, so we also think that we'll we'll see uh more increases as a result of of that as well. And uh, and will also help finally people who are looking for quality caregivers. Uh, in an environment where we know that quality, looking for quality caregivers in in every. Uh, in in every agency and and every sector is becoming increasingly difficult. Uh, so that is how it's being expanded in the governor's budget. And now moving to question seven, whether DSS covers non-hide uh abortions for residents. We indeed do. Uh, non-hide abortions are in fact only uh state-only funded. And uh, we don't, we do not have the cost here, but we do not receive federal match for the uh program. For Husky. Nick, do we have the cost for this, or can we get back to the committee on the cost?
We can follow up with that, yes.
Okay. Uh, the next question refers to the peer support recovery coaches. They are in fact covered under Medicaid as long as they are part of a substance abuse. Uh, or substance use disorder program because it's covered under our demonstration waiver from April of two thousand and twenty-two. So it does reimburse for peers that are certified, and that includes, uh, as you can see, the recovery coaches. That are within a residential treatment setting and some ambulatory settings, not not all of them. And uh, they are also available to people who receive supports under the state's medical health waiver. So they are in fact covered under Medicaid. Now going to question nine, I am going to ask Peter Hadler uh to to respond to this question on behalf of DSS.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, just I will very quickly walk through this. This ties into recent changes in. Um, eligibility around, um, in particular Husky C and Medicare Savings Program. Um, there was a period of time uh going back to the middle of two thousand and twenty-one when CMS provided guidance to states. Saying that individuals who are co-enrolled in Husky C and MSP, if they were no longer eligible for their full Husky C coverage. Should transition solely to Medicare Savings Program. And that could be a result of them not completing a renewal process or otherwise being determined ineligible for Husky C. In accordance with that guidance, DSS transitioned households. From Husky C to solely MSP, making sure they had at least one form of medical coverage during this time period. A recent court ruling has determined that that rule was improperly uh issued by CMS. That interpretation was incorrect. And so uh, we have been waiting for CMS guidance on the appropriate steps to take to be able to reinstate people to that coverage. We've already stopped the system from making any changes. Uh, ongoing through the rest of the public health emergency continuous enrollment period. I.e. the end of March, so that nobody will lose coverage if they're duly enrolled in both of those programs. And we're exploring ways to be able to reinstate them retroactively to their date of termination. Depending on um forthcoming CMS guidance that we anticipate coming this week. So we don't have any numbers. Um, in response to this specific question around the number of people who are affected by this change. Uh, we continue to explore that, and it it shifts practically on a day-to-day basis depending on what information we have from CMS. So. We're hopeful that we'll have that in the very near future, and we will continue to examine the number of people who are affected. And the process that we might do for reinstating them to coverage.
Thank you, Peter. And I will apologize to all the chairs in advance for question ten because we. We inadvertently omitted the updated member data, the per member per month data that you asked us for covered CT, so we will make a point of making sure we get that back to you. We we. We had the data and a charter, but now we just have the narrative, so I apologize for that. Uh, what we can tell you is that the potential cost to expand it will be about thirty million dollars. So the state cost for the current program, as you can see that are listed here. About twenty million dollars in state fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and we think that'll be about twenty thousand enrollees. The actual number is nineteen thousand seven hundred. The cost will go up to about thirty million dollars in state fiscal year. Two thousand and twenty-four, um, and we anticipate that that enrollee amount will be about thirty-six thousand, almost thirty-seven thousand enrollees. And then move up to forty-two point two million with the enrollment of about forty thousand people. Uh, and so about half of the funding for covered CTs, we know, comes from the federal government, and we have a a state match. And the amounts here. Uh, they exclude the cost of the federal premium subsidies and and cost sharing, and we can share more. Uh, in our in our second uh round. What I can say right now is that as we are looking at the numbers. We do think that an increase on to moving from one seventy-five to two hundred. Percent of the federal poverty level could be somewhere in the range of thirty to forty million dollars, and we. If you look at what it costs us now um in FY two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, with about forty thousand enrollees, that is, you know, we expect that number to be matched or even exceeded a bit. If we were to expand it to um two hundred percent, so it could be as high as forty million dollars. Uh, we also wanted to to make note that there would be some significant operational costs associated with this, so. It would not just be the cost of covering um folks. It would, there would also be some operational costs that we are in in the midst of also determining what those would be. So moving now to question eleven, uh, identifying programs that that affect birth outcomes. Because of the wide scope that.
I'm sorry, I had a question. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On that. No, no, that's okay.
My representative, I hope I can answer. Someone in my team might be able to.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so the expansion to the two hundred percent FPL, if I'm not mistaken. The covered Connecticut policies, we have the ability to charge premium on that, don't we? We just don't, correct?
We do have the ability to charge premium, yes.
I thought so. Okay. Is there a way to get the analysis of a slight benefit, like premium sharing on that? Rather than just the state fully funding it. I know I keep hearing it said that it's cheaper for us to. Put people onto the covered CT plan, but um this is over and above. They wouldn't be eligible for Medicaid, so I'm not really following the logic of this is cheaper. To put people on here as and expand it. So I'm wondering if we can get some. Some data around um that and if we were to charge. Um, some sort of premium on this. How could it offset that forty million dollars? And is that forty million dollars, thirty to forty million dollars? Uh, per year or by any?
Nick, I think it's per year.
It would be, yeah, the state here. That's the annual estimate of what the state share costs would be.
Okay, so anywhere from sixty to eighty million dollars for this.
That's right.
And now that is or is not in the current budget?
That is not in the current budget.
Not in the current budget.
No.
Okay. Um, yeah, if you could get me the information on like a premium spread on that, um, I would be interested to see that.
So I just want to make sure, Representative, that I'm recording your question correctly, where you are asking um what cost would?
Well, two things. I'm asking two things. One is, um, the, um. Uh, uh, an idea of a premium spread. We have the ability to charge premium on this and not give it away for free. So I would like to understand a premium spread to share the balance that costs where you're looking at. Like you just said, eighty million dollars to to implement this. Um, so I would like to see like if we were to share the cost of this and not just pay for it a hundred percent, what would that do to that? That sixty to eighty million.
Okay.
And then. No, I forgot the second part.
The co-pay.
The co, yeah, like I would like to understand the cost sharing pieces because I keep hearing again repeatedly. That it is cheaper for us to put people uncovered CT and to pay for it. Um, than it is for them. I don't know what it is, what they're comparing it to, but I just keep hearing that it's cheaper for us to put people uncovered CT. Um, than anything else. So I would just like to understand that.
Okay.
Representative, I think I think assume the comparison would be to just to expand Medicaid to the same.
Right. That's correct.
That's the comparison.
All right, so the comparison.
Yeah, Commissioner, just just following up on Representative Newt's questions. Is my understanding is that covered CT is a program approved by by uh CMS under an eleven fifteen? So the let's see it. So the the current waiver is only through, I think, one seventy-five percent. If we were to go above that. Um, sort of speculative what CMS would approve in terms of. Um, in terms of cost sharing or whether or not they would would approve one. So that's. You, and and this is our population, all the parents currently on the exchange, and they would have whatever cost sharing is associated with it, but for their income level, but.
Um, correct.
But what?
I guess, yeah, maybe that's the difference I'm looking for there. Okay, if they were to just go on access CT and and pay for their own insurance. I don't know how that, you know, there's a subsidy in there, right? So maybe that's the piece everybody's talking about, you know, the. It's cheaper for us to pay for everything for then than just to pay for the subsidy. So that's what I'm I'm trying to understand the the rhetoric around. It's cheaper to put it here.
Thank you for the clarification. That's helpful. That's helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If if you if you'd like, I think it might be also helpful to see if we were to expand. You know, Medicaid to two hundred percent of poverty, what, you know, for Husky A, B, and D, what that would. Result as well. Um, okay. It would be eleven?
Yes, so we'll walk through eleven. We do have um a a lot of of a response here, but essentially. I'm going to ask Nick if he can just go to the charts because I think that will help us to just have a visual of where we are. So I think it was Representative Dylan that asked us to have more of a focus on specific outcomes regarding maternal health. Uh, the latest data we have is for two thousand and twenty-one, and you can see that here we have data on. What we call adverse maternal outcomes, uh, NTSV, which is essentially. Uh, C-section with some degree of complexity, then we have an overall C-section rate. The adverse maternal outcomes uh is generally very broadly defined as um either mother or child, it's mostly mother. Having some sort of adverse health income and also um sometimes adverse mental health income. Uh, outcome as a result of her um pregnancy and childbirth. So you can see the numbers here are outlined um by race. Uh, you can see there is a spike in almost every category. Of maternal uh adverse maternal health outcomes or rates of C-section that are higher for Black and African-American women. Uh, and the next highest category you can see is in multiple races, and that's for the overall C-section rate as well as the more complex. What they call NTSV um C-section rate. And you can also see that the two highest categories for adverse maternal income data here are also. Um, for Black and African-American, Hispanic, and um. Excuse me, and multiple races. So that's generally the maternal health outcomes by uh race and ethnicity in Connecticut. Then if we go down to the infant health outcomes by race, race and ethnicity. Uh, in the state, you'll see that there's also some other benchmarking that happens here. Um, again, we're looking at more adverse outcomes when we're looking at children who are in the NICU. Uh, which is the neonatal neonatal intensive care unit. We have uh almost uh. A and well, we have an exact number of children who are Black and African-American. And children and children who are Hispanic and also children of multiple races that find themselves um. In the in the NICU, and then you can also see here the opioids uh specific uh. Outcomes here of the uh, um, the rate that we have here. Under the NICU for uh utilization denominators and specific N A. I I had. A note in here about what NAS is, but I will get back to you and what that means. But this is what we have in terms of the um infant outcomes by race and ethnicity. So if you go down further, you can see that we cover about fifteen thousand births a year. Um, in Connecticut, and they are all covered under the maternity bundle. I know that Representative Dathan, you'd asked some questions about the maternity bundle. And more of the narrative that we offer in the beginning, I'm just. Being aware of the time. We do offer quite a bit of detail about the maternity bundle. Uh, the eleven fifteen waiver that we are actually going to be pursuing for the maternity bundle so that we can actually. Try to get better outcomes specifically for the categories of women and infants that you that we noted have more adverse outcomes in the slides that we just showed. Uh, now moving to question um twelve. Peter, if I may turn to you to answer these questions about TFA, thank you.
So you guys had had asked a question in our last meeting about uh the proposal that in the governor's budget related to TFA. Um, and uh, how how that would work. Wanted to give a little bit more information about that. So the the status quo right now, the way the program works, is that a person who uh enrolls in TFA. Is able to stay on the program up until they have earned income up to a hundred percent of the federal poverty level. And we disregard that for me for determining that they're ongoing eligibility. However, it's been determined that that that's probably too low of a number. To encourage people to be able to get onto a career path that we seek to have this program do. You know, we've got we've got in-demand jobs around the state, and we want to be able to encourage participants in TFA to be able to pursue the necessary training. And and get on the pathway to a a career that will take them well out of um um the range of the programs that the TFA is supposed to serve. So how do we accomplish this? We increase the earned income disregard level for people who are on that pathway as they continue to accrue earned income. They don't lose their TFA benefits right away. So this eliminates some aspect of benefit cliffs that we always start talking about in many of our programs. And the idea of the way this would work is going up to a hundred and seventy percent of FPL, which is roughly roughly equivalent to a minimum, a full-time minimum wage job for a family of two. With a typical household size of two is the most common average household in the TFA program.
Can you, Peter?
Yes.
Give me a nu- give me a number. Don't tell me what a typical, tell me what what the, what is one seventy-five or one seventy F F FPL?
Nick, can you scroll down about one more paragraph? There's the, there's a little chart. Representative Walker, that shows you the the income, the annual income for a hundred and seventy percent of FPL.
Okay.
And and that's the closest whole FPL percentage to uh state minimum wage full-time job. Um, and that's why we we landed at that number. So the idea is to help people get to a full-time minimum wage and then some. So we don't stop a hundred and seventy percent. We say, you know, you can continue to receive your benefits. If you get onto this trajectory, you can go up to two hundred and thirty percent of FPL. And not lose all of your TFA benefits. However, the proposal does suggest that we start to. Winnow down the level of the TFA benefits slightly for those people who will get up past a hundred and seventy percent up to two hundred and thirty percent. If they're in that range between one seventy and two thirty. It's a twenty percent reduction in the TFA benefit during that time period. And this would last for six months. Once you exceed that hundred and seventy percent. Uh, up to a hundred and seventy percent threshold. So it gives a little bit more room. For people to be able to get going on their career path, to get that training and education while earning some income. And not losing all of their TFA benefits right away. So that is the concept behind this is really intended. To uh do multiple things, address that benefit cliff issue. Provide a little bit more time for people able to be able to earn more income without losing that baseline TFA assistance. And and I think it's important to note that TFA isn't just cash assistance. It comes with with it comes not only employment services, but childcare assistance. You get priority placement and care for kids if you're enrolled in TFA. And a suite of other uh case management assistance programs if you need to be able to have, you know, barriers to full-time employment to help be addressed. So we want to be able to make sure that people who are on this pathway have a little bit more time to get themselves situated to not losing the the core benefit. That's the that's the goal behind um, behind this this proposal. It was also, I'm sorry, does someone have a question? So I just wanted to also quickly provide a little bit of background on uh Saga, because there was a question about is it possible to transition from TFA to Saga? The short answer is it happens in extremely few cases. Um, Saga is fundamentally a program for people who are permanently or temporarily unable to work. Um, do you know that that due to a documented medical condition has very low income and asset levels? And you have to be able to applying for Social Security Disability Insurance or SSI. And that the most that that is the most common population is people who are need a bridge to getting their federal disability or SSI benefits. to getting their federal disability or SSI benefits. So TFA fundamentally being our program for low-income families with dependents. There's only one small sliver of the population that we have carved out to use Saga as a potential cushion for losing TFA benefits, and that is individuals who are uh who age out of a TFA household uh between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one. If they move out of their household, we allow them to continue to maintain a small benefit during that time period without needing to meet that unable-to-work requirement that is otherwise uh a foundation of the Saga program. Now we'll pause there because I know we've got more things to go through. Happy to answer any questions around TFA or Saga.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Um, and just to go back very, very briefly to the maternal health outcomes. So the N A S and I I just know it by a different term, which is why it wasn't coming to me. It's specifically known as the Neonatal Absence Syndrome. It's really children who are withdrawing from opioids when they're born. So when you're looking at those statistics, that's what you're looking at. We're looking at children who were born um affected by opioid use and are are in the process of uh being treated for that. So now going to United Way, if we can identify the necessary staffing and associated funding. So the United Way, as uh the committee may know, has a number of contracts with a number of state agencies, and the Department of Social Services is just one of them. But we use them for specific purposes, uh for uh care information and referral services, for electronic of visit verification, which is also known as E V V, and My Place uh C T support. And together you can see that uh we pay about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for My Place, and our largest spend is with the care information and research and referral services, and our next largest spend is with the electronic visit verification. The United Way has had the same numbers of challenges, same types of challenges that uh actually many state agencies and and other agencies have had in attracting individuals to work uh and to take calls. So they have been experiencing some service delays as a result of that. I have had some conversations with the head of United Way. We are in lockstep in wanting to resolve those issues, and part of that is just being able uh to identify the right people who would want to work at United Way, and unfortunately she's making a bit of headway there. But our total payments are are about four point nine million dollars for United Way, and these are the services that are provided, and we have renewed our contract with them for electronic visit verification. They are a very important partner to us, and we wanted to make sure that that process and that these services continue. Uh, so moving on to the next question about our regional.
There are other agents, there there are other agencies that contract with United Way also.
Yes, there are many.
And and the 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 issue that we had heard was the inability to merge all of them together. So we want to talk about that uh and another.
Certainly, and I I would I would say Representative Walker that I would like to have that conversation in concert with Commissioner Gilman because it is also a contractual issue because each state agency has their own contract. Um, and I I wouldn't want to impose on any of the things that she manages. So perhaps we can have that conversation together about how the contracts work with United Way. Uh, because there are a number of agencies that have individual contracts with them. There is not one master contract for the state for United Way.
Okay.
Commissioner, just following up, the the so it sound in in the written presentation, it looks like two-on-one is available twenty-four seven, but that doesn't seem to reflect where things are right now. Do you know what that, what the current state of things is?
I don't. I think the current state is that they they do close around the business hours, but I don't want to speak for United Way, but they were not necessarily, they operate twenty-four seven, and I know that they had seven days a week, but I know they've had to cut back on some of those hours, but I don't have specifics. I can get those for you because I know they've had to adjust their hours because of the avail- the inavailability of staffing.
But but their contract with you is for twenty-four sevens services and support, even if they're not able, even though they're not able to fulfill that at this point.
Contract with us is primarily with the My Place C T and the and the E V V, and yes, there is part of that contract does require them to have the twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week availability. So they've been trying to provide some availability online and um, you know, with additional staff when they are available. But I can get you more details around how that works. Because I know they've not been able to meet all of those criteria for not just us, but for other agencies because of staffing.
And you is it'd be helpful also, I don't, this is i- if if there's a specialist, uh, you know, a point of contact for for United Way, if there's a way that to sort of to to understand that if that for us to just ask questions directly of them. I don't know if there's a ability for D S S to to pass all that contact information via via the the committee administrator, that'd be helpful.
I will. All right. Thank you. I will. I will do that.
Thank you.
All right. Now, uh, moving to our regional offices. We, the offices, the office hours for all the locations are the same there from eight to four thirty, and there is no location that has closed. I know that um often our Wednesday hours are considered closed hours, but we don't actually close any offices on any day of the week. We do um limit the ability for people to walk in um on those days, but if somebody does, we never turn anyone away, never. Uh, but those days have been set aside to work on processing of of uh renewals and initial applications and work that comes in through the mail. And the idea is to be able to do this through all of the service channels, but I just really want to let the committee know that we we recognize that this is a challenge and that we also recognize that that no one wants it to be a permanent solution to the challenges that we are facing. But we also do have a number of challenges. We have, if you scroll down here, you can see that we are trying to hire people as quickly as we can. I I know Senator Lester, you had asked me uh, you know, once in in a hearing, well, you know, Commissioner, what is the challenge? And the challenge is that we need many, many more people than we have in order to be able to return to our desired service level. Service levels there. So you can see that we have, we had a hundred and forty-five uh vacancies that we are trying to fill, and we're trying to do that by the end of this fiscal year. We also have a number of people who are currently in training uh who are new that are going to additional training, but we're also trying to balance that with their availability for the unwinding. So while they were doing our normal process, we would have a number of people who would come in, they would be trained, they would actually uh essentially would say come offline for a while to receive additional training so that they could be more well-versed in all of the different programs that we have and all of the levels of eligibility that people would have. We aren't able, um, we're thinking about ways that we can adjust that training schedule so that we can have more people available, not only to move toward the goal of reopening our Wednesdays to the way that they were, but also to work towards uh just unwinding and all of the other challenges that that we are facing. So um, we also, you can see there on that on that second bullet, we are trying to expand and our capacity and finding ways to manage and triage our incoming calls. The vast majority of calls that come in are people that are just seeking general information about their eligibility. And and so there must be a way for us to address those issues without uh having eligibility workers who have the ability to do more complex work around taking in um information so that they can determine whether a person is eligible or should be renewed, who they are the same people are answering the phone. And so we are looking at ways that we can redesign that process so that it's a more of a tiered approach. So people that have general questions, they can come in and have those, when those calls come in, they can be answered. And then the eligibility workers are ac- actually answering more complex questions for people who who may have uh more complex needs. Uh, so as I'm learning, I will just share with you, you know, very frankly, that it's the same people doing all of the work. And so what we're trying to do is figure out a way that we can tier that or create different levels so that those that have more experience in eligibility are really more focused on that, and those that that are answering the phones can really answer the phones. It's not all the same people. So then moving um to question fifteen. We um, it's really difficult for us to answer this question in a way uh that it's been asked, and so we we apologize for that. What we can say is that just ten years ago, it was an extremely manual process. We didn't have any online applications. There was really no meaningful um website presence. We had um old computers and there was no Affordable Care Act. There were just, there were, there was no passive renewal process, none of the things that we have now. So now we have many, many of these things, and in addition to the fact that we also now have some text messaging and other kinds of technology that we are looking to leverage so that we can have a better sense of how much staff we need versus the number of clients that we have. So it's really a combination of better leveraging our technology, having the right people doing the right kinds of work at the right time and continue to work through that process. We do have Elizabeth Thomas, who um is the director of our benefit centers. Elizabeth, was there anything else that you wanted to add that I may have missed? Um, you know, keeping our time in mind.
No, Commissioner, I think you you've gotten it. So nothing more to add. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you. Okay. So moving to the next question. And we do have data here about our hires, all right, um, that you can see here. And we do have a number of people that are promoted as well, but I'll move, given uh the time, I'll move on to the ARPA allocations. So there are some proposed ARPA allocations here, so we just wanted to uh address these quickly. The mobile vans in the clinics are really very critical, and in the, and I would also say that our F Q H Cs run a number of these mobile vans and clinics, but they are not permitted to receive any form of payment, government payment, uh, funding, any of that. But they, these vans provide uh extraordinary access to care, particularly in rural areas of our state. So this uh, these capital grants to purchase and upgrade the mobile vans really is it it's it will provide um a higher degree of access and care for people who just can't get access to it for any number of reasons. Um, and in all, it will also provide some healthcare services undocumented to individuals who don't yet or do not qualify for Husky because of their um their immigration status. Then speaking some more to the ten million dollars for the two months of premium assistance, I I will, um, Nick, are you still there? Maybe that's my laptop. Here we go. All right. Uh, so the governor is proposing a one-time pool of funding for two months of premium for people who are between one hundred and seventy-five and two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. We have the numbers there of which are twenty-five thousand and twenty-nine thousand if they enroll in what's known uh under Access Health as a benchmark silver plan. So this is really the governor's uh approach to assisting uh Access Health as well as primarily the Department of Social Services and sort of smoothing out what that unwinding will look like, because we know that a number of people will either no longer be eligible or may be deemed ineligible, but this will allow them to have a one-time uh pool of the two months of premium so that they can have a more of a bridge between the unwinding and um their eligibility determination. Now, moving on to the community action agencies, they.
Before you move on, I'm, I guess this is a little bit of my confusion, right? So we're saying we're going to pay two months of premium for any income over the hundred and seventy-five percent FPL. But in the back, a couple of questions. We had Covered Connecticut going up to two hundred percent FPL with no premium charge.
Right. So that's, that's, that's correct. So I think the distinction between these is that we're having a we were going up there with no premium charge as an ongoing process. This is just the one time for the two months, just as a bridge. And that's really is the difference here.
So these are two different policy decisions, but they're both planned in the budget?
That's correct.
They're not. The first one's not.
The first one is not, and this one is, right.
This one is what is planned in there. So.
This one is in the budget.
But are you then saying we are charging premium for the covered C T people up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand? Like, that we were not.
I'm not sure. I personally am not sure of that answer. I don't know if anyone on my team knows the answer to that question.
No, Commissioner, do you mind if I?
I don't mind at all. No.
So Representative, just to, just to um to uh, we underline what what the Commissioner said, that uh, this ten million dollars uh is in the governor's budget. The expansion in Cover Connecticut from a hundred and seventy-five percent FPL to two hundred percent um is not in the governor's budget. We answer those questions in response to um questions from from the committee.
No, I get that. Yeah, I understand that. So that's proposed legislation that that eighty million is proposed legislation. But this ten million here makes it seem like um we are in fact charging premium for people who are on uh uh C T, covered C T.
Uh, I see.
Up to one seventy-five where, so that's what I'm trying to, are we charging premium? I know we're allowed to.
You're not today, and 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 just to, just to clarify, I think I understand the confusion. The this proposal in the governor's budget would cover uh premium supports for people between one seventy-five percent FPL and two hundred percent FPL. There's it's it's zooming and adjusts that that segment that's just a little bit above rent cover Connecticut income.
So are we, are we then, I guess it's still that that still doesn't answer the question. Are we charging premium for people who are on covered C T right now?
We are not.
We are not. Uh, and that's because it ends at a hundred percent FPL. The governor is is trying to expand it to one seventy-five, but charge premium for one hundred to one seventy-five?
No, so so um to today, the Cover Connecticut program goes up to that one seventy-five, and there are no premiums charged. Um, this proposal here is for the one seventy-five to two hundred percent. Today, um, for forget the governor's budget just for a second and forget other proposals. Today, if someone's at a hundred and seventy-six percent of FPL, they can enroll in a qualified health plan on Access Health, and they pay premiums on that in moment.
All right. So then this is for the people, the one seventy-six to two hundred. And we're saying you go out to Access Health, get a silver plan, and we'll pay two months of your premium. All right, that makes sense to me. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience, Representative.
Oh, no, that's okay.
About all of this.
I live in this insurance world, so I get it. So I.
All right, thank you. I do not, so I appreciate your, your.
I can help you anytime you want, Commissioner.
All right, I I will absolutely take you up on that. Uh, so the the final question we have here is about the ten million dollars to the community action agencies and specifically which clients are going to support. Uh, you can see here that they will support all of the clients that the community action agencies currently support, and they they are in the community, they're on the ground. Uh, so that would include food programs, um, rent and mortgage. It also includes internet access, eviction prevention. Uh, Nick, if you want to just scroll down a little bit, job training and other kinds of economic supports that people might need. So that is where the ten million dollars is going. The we have, as you know, there are um uh nine, ten community action agencies, would they also support us through uh through helping us to administer liheep C programs and C funding. Uh, so that is where that money is going to be able to provide more supports in their respective communities. So um, the final question that we have, I know in the four minutes that we have remaining, is about the extension of the TFA twenty-one month time limit. We apologize that we weren't able to pull together enough data to provide a substantive response to this particular question, but we are still working on this. So when we have that, we will, we will report that back to the committee as soon as possible. Uh, and then at ten fifty-six, uh, Senator Lesser, uh, Mr. Chair, that that is where we are at this moment.
Okay, we are, uh, is that now, did that conclude all of your questions?
No.
No.
No, no, not the committee members' questions. I know that. I it was just. Yes, I figured we might have more than two questions for the for the for the commissioner. Uh, no, but that just you, you just you, those are your responses for us.
Yes, they are.
With the exception of my questions, yeah.
Oh, Senator Newt Show, yes, we have, and we have extensive uh responses to your questions as well. Would you like us to review those? We can certainly start.
Why don't, why don't we not do that? What we got, we got three minutes left. I think what it would be just helpful is, I I think we need at least uh at least an hour, maybe maybe more. Uh, Representative Walker, I should defer to you on this. Uh, do you think that's?
I would, I would say uh we probably need another hour and a half.
Okay.
Because there there's, there's a, you've given us and we've only gotten to half of what we have, we have in the practice. And the the information that you get there, there needs to be an exchange, an opportunity to exchange to go into the detail more so that we can then make a more uh substantial um decision as we go forward with the budget. So I would say we have to act for another hour and a half um of of review. And I don't know how how we're going to do that. Um, I'm going to see if if Madam Administrator is on the call, is she listening to us? She's right here.
Yeah, she's on, Tony. She's on.
And she has a suggestion to make. That's what I figured you did. So the subcommittee was originally scheduled to have its decision-making meeting on Monday, the twentieth from nine to eleven. And why don't we use that time for a follow-up with the D S S? And we will find, I will work with um the aides of Senator Lesser and Representative Gilchrist to find a new date for decision-making. Okay.
That sounds lovely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Bye, guys.
I know Madam Administrator had it all under control.
Thank you.
Okay.
Looking forward to it. If we have further questions, can we submit them to the chairs in writing or just give to the administrator?
Submit them to Madam Administrator and she will.
But but Madam Administrator, if you could just loop uh Representative Gilchrist and I in so we could, we know, you know, I think it would be helpful to just hear where Phil's at.
You want to know all.
No, 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 just this subcommittee. The rest of it's your business.
All right. Would you prefer that I talk to the two of you directly about a new date? Or work through your.
No, 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 no. Uh, uh, sorry, two different questions. You can certainly work with our aides around a new date, but just in. Representative Dayton wanted to see if if members could submit questions through you to DSS, and that's fine, but just loop us in on those so we know what.
Oh, 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 yes. The the questions will go not only to the commissioner, but they'll go to the full subcommittee. So as I get into questions, everyone will go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did the commissioner leave already?
Oh, no, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't just leave. I'm still here.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
All right. Thank you very.